Portsmouth School Board meeting for January 25th, 2011. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ann Mayer?
Here.
Carol Chellman?
Here.
Rebecca Emerson?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Shilman?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Clay Hayward?
Here.
Linda Brulette?
Here.
Savannah Fedaro. So if I would ask you to rise with me for a moment of silent reflection and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin, the snow got everybody all mixed up this week. We've had so many snow days. We left off one little piece on the agenda, which I'd like to make sure we put in, and that is for the public commentary. So I don't want to take away anyone's right to come before the school board and talk to us for three minutes and tell us what's on your mind. Usually we have a sign-up sheet, but I don't believe we have one this evening, so I just want to offer, if anybody would like to come up, there's a microphone and a desk, and you're more than welcome and we'd love to have you. Come up and talk to us if you would like to. Got to give a little bit of time, make sure everybody...okay? Nobody? All right, very good. Thank you anyway. So now, we'll move into the next part of the agenda, which is actually a special presentation. We'll wait while the video guy moves the microphone. And turn it over to Principal Shea.
Principal Shea.
Thank you for hosting tonight, George.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. Welcome to New Franklin. Glad to have you here. Glad to have some New Franklinites well represented as well. We were asked to show an example of some of our work with technology integration at New Franklin this year before the board, and we have many examples of that. However, I thought one of our fifth grades in particular really illustrated what a comprehensive, integrated project could look like across many disciplines, and that's why I asked Ms. Manning Welch's fifth grade to come out tonight to sort of show what one of their projects and the reflections that they've done for it. I think I asked Ms. Manning Welch to, if she could bring a few students, or she said, "Can I bring a few students?", and then the entire fifth grade arrived. But we want to say welcome to all you guys. They didn't know they were going to be on TV tonight, so if you catch them slicking down their hair and whatnot, it's only because it's news to them. So, without further ado, I want to turn it over to our fifth grade teacher, Ms. Manning Welch, and our library media specialist, Sarah Zoe Patterson, who orchestrated this project, so.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're going to be using this screen if you want to orient yourself to be able to see it clearly. As the librarian, I've had the pleasure to support this project that Mrs. Manning Welch's students have undertaken. They have created a coloring calendar with the theme of cryptozoology, and I just want to let everyone know, if you are not well-versed in your cryptozoology, this is the study of mythical animals such as Bigfoot, the Loch Ness Monster, and the Yeti, and we had great debates about the difference between Bigfoot and Yeti and the Wild Man of China and all these other wonderful cryptids. But this theme, while absolutely fun, had a lot of interesting research and information literacy ramifications for us, and I don't want to say too much. I want to let the kids talk about their projects, but what else do you want to say? Is introduction anything?
I think that's a good start. We have a good team here to support us, so we're just here to make the beginning shiny. They really have the most important part to say.
Reading.
How we learn to be better readers during the calendar project.
We learned...
How to read websites and library books.
How to use nonfiction elements.
That Wikipedia may not always be right.
How to read encyclopedias.
How to take good, strong notes focused on research questions we wrote.
How to find useful and specific information.
How to organize our notes by color coding them and also categorizing our notes to answer research questions.
How to find different resources to support your research.
Thank you.
Art in social studies.
We learned to illustrate to go with the written piece.
We learned bookmarks created on Google Docs.
We learned how to do fonts.
Make a coloring book calendar.
We learned how to make a world map showing all cryptids.
We learned how to do scanning illustrations using Adobe Photoshop.
Habitat.
How cryptids survive.
And the cryptids diet.
World map showing all cryptids.
History of sightings of cryptids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Technology.
How we learn to be better technology users during the calendar project.
We learned...
How to use Google Docs appropriately, word processing, formulas, spreadsheet forms, how to use a scanner, how to search the web safely, appropriately, the responsibility.
How to use graphic design strategies and tools like Photoshop and InDesign, reading on the computer, how to scan websites to determine relevance, and that Wikipedia is not always accurate.
How we learn to be better writers during the calendar project.
We learned...
How to use Google Docs appropriately, word processing, formulas, spreadsheet forms, how to use a scanner, how to search the web safely, appropriately, the responsibility.
How to use graphic design strategies and tools like Photoshop and InDesign, reading on the computer, how to scan websites to determine relevance, and that Wikipedia is not always accurate.
How we learn to be better writers during the calendar project.
We learned...
How to...
Balance opinions and facts.
How to...
Write a paragraph better.
How to...
Craft leads and introductions.
How to...
Craft conclusions.
How to...
Stretch details so readers get a good mind picture.
How to...
Use transition words.
How to...
Grab facts and put it into writing.
How to...
Revise or make it better.
How to...
Use a graphic organizer.
How to...
Balance dialogue and narration.
How to...
Use an editor's checklist.
Thanks you.
Thank you.
Math.
We learned...
How to multiply the number of calendar times the cost of each calendar and to check our work with division.
How to make change.
How to figure out how much money we collected, subtract the cost of printing the calendars, then to calculate how much profit we would make.
How to evenly split the profits between ourselves and the charities of our choice.
How to use Google Spreadsheets formulas to help us check our math for accounting numbers of calendars orders and money collections.
Hi, I'm Jonah.
Hi, I'm Addie.
Science.
We started cryptozoology.
We wrote paragraphs about cryptozoology.
We had to find evidence to tell why not we saw this type of science as real or not.
We learned about scientific community's view.
We learned vocabulary.
We learned to watch for the differences between facts and opinions.
Thank you.
Small business.
We won...
How shipping, how about shipping and packing?
We won...
How to sell our product, including trying to get the person to buy the product without begging.
We needed...
To have a good idea for a product that people would want to buy.
It's important...
To have a prototype or example to show customers.
We had...
To learn how to keep careful track of how many we had sold and how much money was collected, we used Google Spreadsheets.
We awesome.
Donated part of our profits to Camp Sunshine and St. Jude's Research Hospital.
Everyone...
Needed to work hard on their part of the project to make this product.
Thank you.
So, they, when George came to me and said, "Can you talk to us about technology use in your classroom?", it seemed wrong for me to do it by myself, because while I know how to use technology, why would I pass up an opportunity for these guys to stand up and show you? Think about, that's more than half my class sitting there who was willing to come out on a night from their basketball practice or from whatever to showcase for you what a project that they did that they had 100% passion about from the idea, they came up with the idea themselves of cryptozoology, and all the way through, they really did it all. And yes, it used technology in amazing and really true ways beyond saying, "Oh, we're going to the computer lab today because it's computer class." These guys are really using technology seamlessly. They use it naturally, and that's what we really want for technology integration, and this project really is a good example of that. They didn't, when we had to do this together, this was a great process actually for us to say, "What did you learn during that project?", they said, "Well, it was fun. What did we learn?", and for them to really look back and say, "We did all that? Wow, we're kind of pretty good." So, one of the last things I just wanted to show, we do have some calendars here if anyone needed one for their office, and Mr. Shea will help you take care of that. We left a little jar there if you needed anything. On the very back page of it, we have, we wrote a survey about whether or not the people who bought our calendar and read through it, if they made it to this particular page, we have a blog, that's a homework blog, and on it is a form saying, "Do you believe in cryptozoology after having read our calendar?", so if you in fact end up with one of our calendars, feel free to visit our blog and tell us what you think about it, okay? And we're happy, although I didn't tell them this yet, but they'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any right off the top of your heads. No, you don't get to ask one. Look at, you've told them everything they need to know. They are astounded. Oh, I'm sorry. I actually have two things. Could you pass one of those around so we could look at it? Sure. And I'm curious, what was the most popular cryptid? What do you think?
Bigfoot.
Bigfoot?
Nessie.
Nessie?
And also...
Excellent. What was, did any of you guys learn about one that you'd never heard of before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I learned, I didn't know this was a cryptid, the Wild Man of China.
Yeah, I'd never heard of that. And is that somebody, is that supposed to be somebody like Bigfoot, kind of?
Yeah.
That's really cool. You guys did an awesome job. Thanks for sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. You're really cool.
What are you saying?
Material's in the report for the...
I mean, I can do the report real quick, Mitch, if that's...
Oh, you can?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Cool, Bob? Yeah, he's here.
He was.
Yeah, he's here.
Yeah, he's sitting in the back.
Okay. That was great. We learned. Okay, so moving on to the superintendent's report, we'll do this quickly. We have Attorney Sullivan patiently waiting in the back to come up, so we're going to go through some new, some very quick information first, Bob. Ed's going to go through some very quick information, then, okay?
Yes, well, in your packet you'll find actually two items of information that are appropriate for Mr. Sullivan's presentation. One is a draft policy, KF, use of Portsmouth School facilities, and he'll be addressing that and some of the larger issues around that, as well as our current facilities use fee schedule. And then I have two pieces of correspondence I was asked to share. One comes from Jim Sullivan, asked to share this, apparently the use of online technology at Claremont High School, and insisted I share this with school board members, and so I have done so, as well as Ms. Sweet, who presented at the public hearing the other evening, wanted to share some information. She had said she had prepared as part of her presentation, and so I share it with you this evening. I haven't been answering any questions about it, pretty straightforward.
Do we know who Mr. Sullivan is, or is he just a citizen in Portsmouth?
It was an email that didn't have an address.
Okay.
Just the other piece on this... Is this something that's actually happening? You know, do we know what's happening in Claremont today? Have they implemented this, or is this...
I don't, I'm not certain of that, Tom.
Okay, just curious.
Don't know.
Okay. Any other, any questions on those two items? Okay. That's it for information?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a little sort of workshop session for facilities use, so you want to...
Yeah, so Attorney Sullivan, if you would join us, it's always nice to have you out on a nice January evening.
Grab that fifth grade chair and desk.
About the right size for me. And so, the context of this is, the policy subcommittee has been working with Ms. Dwyer, Attorney Sullivan, and some research folks in his office to help us really address the facilities use policy. And so, rather than me explaining, I think Bob has a nice way of explaining what the issue is and what we've been confronted with, because we've had a number of requests from, let's say churches, or any number of folks who would like to come into the facility. It's raised some concern, and so Bob's kind of can walk us through that and what are the considerations, because we can tailor a policy any way the board ultimately wishes to have it, but it's important to understand what the hurdle is and then, you know, go from there. So, thank you, Bob, for being here. Appreciate it.
Well, as the board members know from a lot of past experience, the legal environment in which you operate can be very complex and sometimes counterintuitive. As examples of that, I would just offer up special education, collective bargaining, education funding. The idea that you operate in this complex and sometimes counterintuitive environment reaches an extreme, I think, when it comes to First Amendment-related issues. In terms of use of facilities, school facilities by non-school parties, we begin with the clear law that you have the authority to allow outside entities to use school facilities at times they're not needed by the schools, basically under whatever terms and conditions you feel are reasonable. However, there's one particularly complicated condition related to the First Amendment, and that's why I'm here. I have already met with the policy committee, I've met with the superintendent, and this issue that I'm going to talk about, this public forum issue, is something that the city council itself has struggled with significantly with regard to municipal buildings. The trustees of trust funds have wrestled with this with regard to Prescott Park and in particular, the stage at Prescott Park. So it's an issue that we've dealt with a lot in the past, I have dealt with a lot in the past, and I think that's why the superintendent wanted me to come here today. Basically, it's this: While you have broad authority to make school facilities available for use by non-school people or parties or entities, any time that you do so in a way that allows a school facility to be used for expressive conduct, speech-related activities, a great example is, a few years ago, you voted to allow a presidential candidate to use a school auditorium. Whenever you do anything like that, that allows a facility to be used for public expression, you then create a legal designation for that facility of being a public forum. Once you have either intentionally or even unintentionally allowed any facility to become a public forum, then from that point onwards, you lose the ability or the authority to deny the use of that facility to anyone or any entity based upon the content of their speech. I'll give you an example. If you allowed a presidential candidate to use an auditorium, because as you did at the time, you felt that it was an appropriate use of public facilities to allow the facility to become part of the presidential electoral process, once you have done that, and that facility becomes a public forum, a place where individuals have a constitutional right to express themselves, and you can't deny it to them based upon what they might say, if the following week, an entity that advocated some kind of a, I'm going to be indirect, a social practice that will be adverse to children, if they wish to use the facility for that reason, you would be constitutionally obligated to allow them to use that facility under the same terms and conditions that the presidential candidate was allowed to use the facility. This is, you know, it's difficult sometimes to get your head around this, but let me use an example that has occurred in the city. The stage at Prescott Park, that stage is used for plays, plays selected by and through the government, and it is done, the municipal government, and it is done for that reason expressly to avoid that stage becoming a public forum. Entities that wish to use that stage for things which frankly would not be desirable or appropriate in a public park, particularly one that desires to maintain a pastoral setting, have approached the trustees and sought to use that stage for activities that I frankly would have found disgusting myself. And the trustees were able to prevent the use of that stage by those kind of entities because the trustees could say truthfully, "We have never allowed our stage to be used by any non-governmental entity, anyone but the city itself, for public expression." This is called for the trustees to make some very difficult decisions. After 9/11, an outside entity approached the trustees and said, "We would like to put on a memorial to the fallen firefighters of 9/11, and we'd like to put it on the Prescott Park stage." This seemingly innocuous thing, had the trustees allowed that to happen, outside entity, not governmental, putting on that kind of a public expression, expressive conduct, had the trustees allowed that to happen, then that stage would have become a public forum, and the next entity that wanted to put some kind of a presentation on that stage that might not have been such an admirable purpose, would have had to have been allowed to do it. So the trustees have come to understand this First Amendment issue and worked with it a lot. Similarly, the city council. The rooms in City Hall, council chambers, conference room A, while they too could be made available, as you could make available your rooms, they're limited to governmental use. There's an adopted written policy by the city which says just that. Rooms in City Hall are available for governmental use only. They are not available for purposes of public expression, and it is for this reason, so that the government, the municipal government can maintain control of who says what in City Hall, to avoid, you know, you all could think of entities or groups that you wouldn't want in frankly City Hall, and the only way to, on this First Amendment basis, to be able to control that is by not allowing these rooms to become public fora. So this issue faces you when you seek to adopt, or when you move towards adopting a policy for use of school facilities. You may, as you have in the past, determine that at some times, some places should be public forums, that there's some purpose consistent with the mission of the school department that would suggest that happen. But what I'm here to talk about is that you need to be careful in how you do it, or else you could be subject then to the law of unintended consequences. Things could happen in schools that the citizenry might not want happening in schools, that you might not want happening in schools. And my purpose in being here at the request of the superintendent was just to sensitize you to the issue so that, you know, you can think about it and make the decisions that you think are appropriate. One option may be this: You might determine that some rooms or some facilities should be public forums. The library, the public library has determined that the Levinson Room should be a public forum, and the use of the Levinson Room in the public library would not be denied to anyone based upon the content of the speech that they wish to engage in. There are some limitations, the number of times a year that an entity might use it, you know, and there are conditions relating to custodians, et cetera, but there would be no discrimination against anyone based upon the content of their speech in the Levinson Room. You may select from the facilities available to you, some facility that you wish to operate similar, more similar to the Levinson Room than to the city council chambers, for example. But these are complex decisions, they call for a lot of thought. We provided you with what I would frankly consider sort of a preliminary draft policy tonight, not probably in a forum ready to be adopted, but definitely in a forum which you can read and think about, and help you come to a form of a policy that you want to adopt. And obviously, we're here, I'm here, Kathleen's here, superintendent, to help you do that. That's really the issue I wish to discuss, but I'm happy to answer any questions I can for anybody about anything.
Great. Thank you.
One option may be this: you might determine that some rooms or some facilities should be public forums. The library, the public library has determined that the Levinson Room should be a public forum, and the use of the Levinson Room in the public library would not be denied to anyone based upon the content of the speech that they wish to engage in. There are some limitations, the number of times a year that an entity might use it, you know, and there are conditions relating to custodians, et cetera, but there would be no discrimination against anyone based upon the content of their speech in the Levinson Room. You may select from the facilities available to you some facility that you wish to operate more similar to the Levinson Room than to the city council chambers, for example. But these are complex decisions, they call for a lot of thought. We've provided you with what I would frankly consider sort of a preliminary draft policy tonight, not probably in a form ready to be adopted, but definitely in a form which you can read and think about and help you come to a form of a policy that you want to adopt. And obviously, we're here, I'm here, Kathleen's here, superintendent, to help you do that. That's really the issue I wish to discuss, but I'm happy to answer any questions I can for anybody about anything.
Great. Thank you. So, does anyone have any questions? It's Rebecca.
I have a question, I think it might be more to the superintendent, is there, or Steve, is there a history of people who have requested, like who in the past has wanted to rent our facilities?
Well, I-
And I don't even, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out, like, is there a huge call for people using the theater at the high school? So, is that maybe one space we would consider a public forum? Or is it usually small groups of people who want to discuss a city issue, like the Portsmouth taxpayers? Like, is there a history? Is there some sort of average of who-
Well, I think most recently, some years ago, there was an entity that was renting the middle school as a church, and most recently, we were requested to have our high school auditorium used, you know, for that purpose, i.e. a church on every Sunday, 52 weeks of the year.
And there have, over the years, been issues involving the Boy Scouts. There have been issues involving gun shows. You know, it's not a, you know, a weekly occurrence, but they come up from time to time, and I think the unfortunate nature of it is, you would not want to learn about this public forum problem after you've received an application from somebody you really didn't want in the schools.
And just a quick follow-up, how, are the presidential candidates government? How does that follow-
No, I do not think you could come up with a more pure example of pure expression than a candidate running for office using a facility.
Tom.
Bob, the requirements for the facility, reading through that as well as the definitions, you know, it's a pretty well orchestrated labyrinth, you know, of checks and balances, you know, 25 here, and local community being more than 75 percent. Is that air on the conservative side? And looking at other communities that might, or other organizations that have these types of concerns, I mean, are we airing on the conservative side? And, you know, is this your recommendation, or are you saying that some of these things could be tweaked accordingly?
Everything in there is merely a suggestion for you. The criteria that was used in putting those suggestions was frankly, what do we feel based upon what we already know the school board would want to accomplish? But we may not have correctly gauged your thoughts, and you may wish to change those things.
Carol.
So, the policy that you've given us, the proposed policy, is a limited public forum policy?
Yeah.
And basically, if we were to go along with this, we would be, we would have to, if somebody came in and wanted to use it for some sort of expression, we, this policy that you've proposed to us, we would have to do that. Even though it's limited, we still would have to do it, as long as they fell within our requirements of 25 people, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess in the other comment I just wanted to make, I know that you said in there that it would be available to school-sponsored groups, youth-related groups, and local community organizations, and it's, I just was curious as to why you selected those specific, and I think the local community organizations is a pretty big-
Hmm, right, and I-
That's just a comment I would make.
And I think that's why, you know, I'm saying that that policy, as is in front of you right now, is really not ready for primetime. It's ready for you to read it and think about it, but that's, I think the idea of local community groups, that could be problematic, that could be too broad. But the feeling was, the school board probably wants to make these facilities available within the community to some relatively high degree, but without creating the public forum problem that I talked about. Another concept to think about is this: not every use of a facility is expressive conduct. If you allow some group of adults to use a facility to play volleyball on a Wednesday night, that doesn't make the gym a public forum, because volleyball is not expressive conduct. If you allowed a classroom to be used for some kind of adult education, that's not necessarily creating a public forum either, not expressive conduct. But if you allow the presidential candidate in, if you allow a political group, those kind of things would be expressive conduct and would create the public forums. So, as I said at the beginning of my remarks, this stuff is complex and sometimes counterintuitive.
Kent.
Hey, Bob. How you doing?
How do you ever really know?
Jay Leno's retiring, maybe this is why.
Oh, is that true?
Bob, I've been down this road too many times with you. And you mentioned the gun show, and I think in my infancy on the board, that's 1994, I remember the passion Charlie Griffin had. Unfortunately, I can't right now remember the passion, Charlie Griffin was chairman at the time, which side he was on, but he was very passionate, one way or the other, that, you know, the use of the gun show actually was my first exposure to, you know, use of the buildings. And you just said, like, the volleyball team, or right now, we have a large soccer, semi-pro type soccer that wants to use the field. I'd almost counter that, though, because if one of these groups was sponsored by herbal marijuana, an alcoholic beverage, or some adult-type theme, we could run into problems with what we say is appropriate and what isn't appropriate. I mean, this is a very large can of worms. And I talk out of both sides of my mouth on this, because when we built the high school, one of the major goals was, is that we want to make sure the building gets higher utilization by groups and so forth. And we've just got this tonight, this is a lot different than what we've had in the past, so I appreciate it, this is not even for a first reading, this is for us to take home and digest for a couple of weeks or so. But one of the questions I've had that has gone through my head that UNH has used, which is public property also, is that they have sectioned off certain parts of their facility to have a private organization take that over. They sort of take the responsibility off themselves, they have a, and I'm not happy that state of New Hampshire allows University of New Hampshire to use a Connecticut firm, but they have a Connecticut firm that actually runs their, the Whittmore Center, their gym, and a number of other facilities. So, my question to you is, is there an easier way, if we were to do that for certain aspects of renting? Because, like I said, as much as I'm a true believer of freedom of speech, I also don't want to see the board get itself, as you so well put tonight, in a jam. And does going to a private enterprise to allow them to have certain parameters, certain buildings, certain times, would that be an answer? Because truly, we should be giving the taxpayers something more for their building.
I don't think that going to a private entity is the answer, and here's why. The Verizon Arena is owned by the City of Manchester. City of Manchester entered an entity with-
I'm sorry, I meant the Whittmore.
Yeah, I know, but my example involves Verizon. Verizon Arena is owned by the City of Manchester, and City of Manchester entered a contract with a private company to run the events and operate the facility. There was, at that time, oh, there still is, a newspaper called The Hippo.
Yes.
And the private entity, and this goes right to your question, the private entity made the determination that it was going to allow exclusive use or sale of newspapers inside the facility to be by the Manchester Union Leader. I may get these facts a little wrong, I'm doing it from memory, but this is roughly what happened. And so, the private entity said, "Only the Union Leader can be sold in this building, owned by the city government building." And the Hippo sued. This was litigated over in Manchester, I'm going to say, I'm guessing again, five years ago, and the court said at that time that simply because the building was operated by a private entity did not exempt it from this public analysis. And in fact, the Hippo had a right to be sold in the, right next to the Union Leader, in the news rack next to the Union Leader, under the same terms and conditions as the Union Leader could be sold. I think you need to understand, looking at it, this, it is seen by the court's First Amendment jurisprudence, you know, the law, the First Amendment in this country, that unrestricted by the government, freedom of expression, you know, the ability of people to say what they think ought to be said, is sort of the bedrock foundation of the whole system of a representative democracy. It is given, therefore, the First Amendment is given really the highest level of protection. And frankly, my rule about First Amendment lawsuits is, when cities get involved in First Amendment lawsuits, they lose them. So, the trick, if you will, is to be able to accomplish legitimate government goals and functions that you might see without putting yourself in a position where you're going to be in any First Amendment litigation. Governments seeking to in any way infringe upon anybody's right to express themselves anyhow have a high burden in all these lawsuits, and they really need to be avoided, which is why I'm suggesting to you, as you think your way through your policies, to, you know, be aware of this public forum problem to the extent you allow any of your facilities to be used for expressive conduct. And back to the Hippo incident, or example for a minute, I don't think that making any of your facilities available to a private entity to then re-lease them or reuse them, I don't think that gets you out of the woods on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, ma'am Carol.
So, I just had a quick question. If we did decide to rent out our properties and some anti-civil hate-filled group that we don't agree with decided to use it, we have two choices. One is to deny them and risk facing a lawsuit, and the other would be to allow them to use it and then have to have a greater discussion in the community as to why they're allowed to and why we disagree? I mean, is that, so what is-
Those, well, there's a third choice.
Okay.
There are those two, but there is a third choice, which is to let them use the facility.
Right, and but then I would hope we would have a discussion as to why we don't agree with them, but we're upholding our, or their right.
Carol.
I'm sure we'll have further discussion on this, but something I think that's important to remember is, you know, like the library is a place of ideas and freedom of thought. Schools should be places of ideas and freedom of thought, and if I think an organization is coming in that has a very ugly message, this is America, and we're, and I think as a school board, we should support ideas and freedom of intellectual thought, whether we agree with it or we don't. I mean, that's the history of our country, is that sort of thing, and I think that's a little bit along the lines of what you were saying to Attorney Sullivan. And also, the other thing I would say, too, is I'm not a big fan of coming up with a policy to avoid litigation, rather, come up with a policy that fits with our values and principles and what we want to see happen, and if it's a good policy and we've talked to attorney, it'll probably avoid litigation.
Yeah.
I was just trying to think of a particular location that we might be able to come up with, similar to what Prescott Park has done, where they used the parking lot down, down at the end.
Can I just, yeah, you know this, and maybe others don't.
Right.
The other thing that the trustees did, or one of the other things the trustees did, is in addition to protecting the stage for governmental speech, you know, speech specifically authorized by the municipal government, they did pick an area in the parking lot area where the backdrop is the Navy Yard over the river, and they expressly designated that to be the public forum. And frankly, the trustees would allow anyone to express any ideas in that area, and that's what was walked.
So, that's what I'm thinking, if we could come up with a location that could be specifically designated, this is the place. I'm racking my brain, I haven't come up with a thought, but maybe we could.
Behind the dumpster, is that what you were saying?
Somewhere along there.
I don't think your mic is working. No? Question?
Don't you sort of address that in here with the classrooms? Do you address that?
Okay. I thought I was missing something. No, my question is, back to something Kent mentioned, are, we obviously don't allow alcohol and drugs and cigarettes and everything on the school grounds, what if we had somebody who wanted to use our field, and they are, you know, endorsed by Bud Light or something? Are we within our rights to say, "Can't put that stuff up," or should, I mean, I guess I want to raise that, you know, how do we deal with that?
I think the public forum issue only comes up when the facility is actually used for the purpose of expressive conduct.
Okay.
If it's a soccer team, and the soccer team happens to be sponsored by Bud Light, I don't believe that's expressive conduct, that's a soccer game.
Okay, and that wouldn't go against our policy of not having alcohol and, okay.
I have one quick question. So, you were saying, a couple of years ago, I remember during one of the presidential races, we allowed a presidential candidate to use, was it Little Harbor?
Yeah, Little Harbor.
So, was that a door that we opened, and what came in with, through that door?
We, it was a door that was open. It was a conscious, knowing decision by the school board at the time-
Correct.
-after significant discussion. I don't believe anything has come through the door.
Okay.
And, but I guess the whole point is, in going forward and considering the breadth of facilities that you have-
Right.
-you know, you want to make sure nothing, I guess, comes through the door, unless you want it.
Well, with the door open now, what can come through that door?
Anybody that wished to use that facility for public expression.
Just that facility? Not this facility, not the middle school?
Right, right, right.
Just that facility.
I think this is done on a facility-by-facility basis.
Got it.
Can I just address that quickly?
Okay, sure.
My understanding, though, is that we kind of put a halt on stuff and said, "We're in the process of rewriting our policy, and so we're not renting our facilities right now." Am I right?
Yes, that's true.
For the express purpose of rewriting this and being really clear about what we are doing.
So, can I just pick up one second? So, because that was the other question I had, though, so, because I was under the impression you had said that you can't take a step backward. So, once the door is open, you can't close the door?
You can't, I've thought about this really a lot. I think you cannot close it after you've received a request. So, if you had a facility that you've-
In between requests?
In between requests, I believe you can.
Okay.
Which is what we're doing right now.
But you couldn't do it in the face of a request.
Doors closed.
You'd have to grant that request, and then it's, as you said, once they're gone-
Okay, so it's not forever, you can rethink, a new board could have a different opinion somewhere down the line.
You know, I've actually looked for the law that said exactly that, and I never found it, but it seems like it must be so.
Okay. Otherwise-
Obset of sound.
Well, it's the bottom side of the law. So, we agree.
Okay, wait, wait.
So, the point being is that previous event will not supersede the new policy.
Correct.
Correct.
Right. Regardless of whether or not you find it.
Well, we may create it if we can't find it.
Because otherwise, you make one decision and you're stuck with it for eternity.
Yes. Yeah, and that can't, just can't.
That's crazy. Okay. Any other questions? Did you want another part of this?
No, I appreciate this, and so, in the broad picture, this policy was crafted with a couple of assumptions in mind.
A lot of assumptions.
Right? And would you like me to say them, or might you, Attorney Sullivan? One was the general thought that the board would want to have, make the facilities available and optimize use of the facility wherever possible. And, you know, this notion of the fields, we're talking about making a separate petition to use the fields and gymnasiums, et cetera, directly to Russ Wilson, because that's not expressive conduct. We're talking about, you know, in the new facilities maintenance director position, putting facilities in Ken Lynch's hands in terms of those other places. We were narrowly defining a classroom at the high school as the public forum. I mean, that was the intent of this policy, to say, "That's the one designated place, much like the parking lot at Prescott Park, for that purpose." And then, limit the number of times, much like the library, in which this could occur. Is that fair to say, Bob?
It is.
Yeah.
What do you mean, limit?
In other words, like, the Levinson Room is only available eight times per year. I think we put a singular limit.
To a particular group, you mean?
Right, correct.
So, they couldn't have a multi-night weekend or something, doing something, it would be a one singular occurrence.
Okay. A couple of questions, or you want something else? The hands are all going up a little bit.
You want to get them going?
Kent Rebecca Dexter.
And I understand what you're saying, and I understand what Attorney Sullivan's saying, but I don't want to fear, and I go back with what Carol says, you know, we're founded on freedom of speech, and we are public, and I think we will wrestle with it. I may differ in my view of a gun show, and again, you know, there might be parameters of what, you know, is allowed on a facility for safety. Safety can always, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a law out there, Bob might say there's some law out there, for, that would allow for safety and so forth. But again, I really wholeheartedly agree with Carol, is that, you know, we should be cultivating this, and when it comes to Portsmouth, Portsmouth was the, one of the founding areas of religious rights in escaping from over in Europe at the time under the king- of religious rights in escaping from over in Europe at the time, under the kingdoms and empires and so forth. So I think we dance a very fine line of our own values and beliefs, and it's like, the business I ran, I hate blueberry milk, okay? Can't stand it, but guess what? I still sold it because there was another group that, out there of people that liked it. So, I mean, I think we have a long discussion on it, but I also agree with Leslie, you know, we're holding back right now, and we're not leasing, and we're not renting, and so I do think it's an area we've got to wrestle with relatively soon.
Yeah, move forward on the policy.
I want to flush that out a little.
So, a couple of thoughts. I think we are going to have to debate this, because there's a philosophical view, and then there's a practical view, and we're going to be creating policy for future boards, and philosophically, it's very easy to fall down on the side of, let's keep it open, but the first group that comes in that the community has real problems with, they will come back here to this board, and they will complain. And so we do need to be thoughtful and cautious. In that vein, the other question I have is, since the, several city locations are already an open, a limited open forum, the library and the parking lot next to Prescott Park, the question I would have is, how many is enough for the city? Since, again, these are city buildings, and these are city locations. So I think we need to kind of understand both the number of requests that come in over the threshold for the city, and are two locations enough, or is part of the direction from the city to suggest that every entity make one facility available for open, a limited open forum?
No, I'm not really making that recommendation, but it's very clear that with regard to the school facilities, you are the decision maker, and frankly, it's whatever policy you as a group decide needs to be implemented, you know, that's what we would draft the language to meet.
All right, thanks, Rebecca.
But to Dexter's point, Prescott Park and the library are free of charge, whereas this would be a source of revenue, potentially. But my question goes back to the fields and expressive, if someone wants to use the field for a rally, which, does it fall under the expressive...
In my opinion, it would. A rally is an entirely different thing than a soccer game.
So it wouldn't fall under the facilities, the athletic facilities director, if they wanted to use the field for a non-sporting event?
I think if someone used that field for a political rally, you have made it into a public forum.
Okay, so we can say, you can come and play your game, but you can't have a rally or a vocal, okay.
I do believe you can do that.
I just wanted to make sure that that was a...
Yes, I believe you can do that.
A separate, okay.
So, so music would be an expressive speech?
Yeah, there's no question that, to some degree, any kind of artistic presentation's got some level of First Amendment protection.
Could be, okay. Could be religious, you know?
Could be.
Could be country music.
Whether they deserve it or not.
And I just wanted to make a point, that, you know, I think maybe this will help out, expressive view is probably 1% of the rental that we're taking a look at. You know, most people are going to want to use the facility for a holiday bazaar, for the soccer game, so what we're talking about is that, yes, we want the facilities open for business, but it's that very small component that is the most explosive that we probably can do without, you know? So it's not, it's not suddenly saying that we're going to close down 50% of the facilities, it's really that very, very small component that's the most explosive, that, you know, we probably don't even need it, you know, that we're going to keep the business open for all the stuff that we really have, which is the facilities, like the outdoor fields and athletics and the gymnasium, that, you know, have existing tenants today, where we have the holiday bazaar, we've got the Seacoast Half Marathon, and a lot of other events that use the facilities. So, you know, I think, I just want to put it into perspective that it's a very small component.
Leslie.
This is a very small thing, but I think we should take names out. Ken Lynch and Russ Wilson, I should just say athletic director.
The position.
Yeah, the position.
Okay. Did you guys have your hands up? I couldn't see. Carol.
At the end of our policy meeting, we had more detailed information regarding who has requested to use our facilities in the past. I could have sworn that Attorney Chamberlain had, she had some data on, and I think it would be helpful for the board to have that.
Oh, that's true, that's right, Carol, right.
Yeah, because I don't know, I'm not sure if I agree that it's such a tiny percentage that's expressive speech. I know the Association of Portsmouth taxpayers would like to use our, actually, is currently using our facilities. If they were to come in on a new policy, and let's say we took your position that, you know, it's such a, we would be excluding them. I mean, it's not just necessarily explosive speech, it's any kind of speech, and like Chairman was saying, you know, music falls under that. So I'm not so sure that it's an accurate statement to say that it's such a tiny percentage that is expressive speech. I think it would be good to look at that data and come to a conclusion as to really what percentage this is, but my, I would be cautious about assuming that it's such a small percentage at this point.
And I take that, you know, absolutely, I hear you, but if you use the example of, say, Portsmouth listens, they actually meet a lot of the criteria in the existing, the way the policy is proposed and drafted, so they, people that would be showing up are Portsmouth residents, so they fall into the local community, you know, organization, so the, absolutely, it's worthy of more discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always enlightening.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Dwyer.
Kathleen, you were great.
Well, the only other point I wanted to reference, and it's just a point of information for the board, I did want to share the current facilities fee schedule, and one of the pieces that Attorney Sullivan had shared was that the city does, as part and parcel of its budget processes, always reviews fee schedules and makes adjustments accordingly, just as a regular annual piece in the budget. So I'm not suggesting there be any modifications to this, and there are some other fee schedules as well, but I just wanted to share with you the current, what we currently charge for use of the facilities.
Okay.
That's all. It was just an item for information, and I do think it's probably good practice to annually set your fees, so that they're always being reviewed on a regular basis.
At some point, can we also see the rec department field usage fees? I mean, I don't think it's in here, is it?
That we would be charging the rec department?
No, 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 I mean, just what they charge.
Oh, I see, oh, okay.
I'd be curious to see what they charge.
I'll ask that from Ross, I think we have that.
We might have been given it at some point.
Years ago, I remember.
I get it.
It's got drafted, I think Dexter, we have that.
Okay.
It's available.
Thanks.
So all monies that come in from these rental facilities go directly to the general fund?
And that's a good segue. That was a perfect question, Rich. That was perfect.
I'm going to check and see, is this one on? It is, okay. Just the light's burned out. The light's burned out, that's all.
Okay.
Our rental fees go into the general fund revenue. It's usually near the end of the budget process, because it's not as big a portion of our discussions, but on the revenue page, we have tuition rentals, are the two primary items under local, so that does go. What we end up doing is charging for the custodial coverage and, you know, maintenance or technology or something like that, the rental fees go into revenue, those go into an expense offset to offset, because generally, it ends up being overtime.
And is that true for the field rentals that are school properties?
I got to check with Ross to tell you the truth, because I, we haven't, my office hasn't done the billing for that, so...
Yeah, would you check?
I can do that.
Thanks.
Can I ask one more quick? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To touch upon what our chairman had asked, would the monies that are collected from the nonprofit and the profit organizations, will that money fall under what the state is trying to push onto us by using the 1099s, the 1099 form?
I guess you'd have to give me a little more explanation as...
Okay, the state is...
I don't think the state is pushing 1099s on us.
The state is actually trying to find ways of collecting more money, even through the school systems. What they are trying to do is to force us to use the 1099 form on any monies that is collected from the school system, such as, like even this, and even organizations.
Well, money collected, money collected by the school system, because we're a political subdivision, we're, we are tax-exempt by definition, so we don't have to do that, but if we, if we were to pay somebody something, they need to give us a 1099.
Okay.
All right. But I was unclear that it was the state.
Okay.
I thought it was the IRS that was, that was in the process of trying to, trying to readdress the 1099 situation, and I don't know how far it's gotten, but I, the rumor was that they were going to ask that any employee who was reimbursed for anything would have that put on a 1099.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Wesley, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just to bring this full circle, we have policy next Wednesday, I believe, so we'll take this and reread it and review it, and then bring it back for first reading, or do you want to bring it back for a workshop, or a discussion, or whatever?
Workshop it again?
I'm just asking.
I think, I think an hour worth of our time, because it's a loaded issue.
So we bring it back?
Why would we do first reading, then workshop, and then second reading?
Can we do first reading and then discuss it?
So we have something in front of us. So you're reacting to something formal?
Right.
Wouldn't you want a first reading?
Right.
That puts it on the table, that has a conversation.
But as long as we can hold a second read, because as we have it now, second reading is to follow the next schedule.
But is that required or not?
Yeah, that's what we, yeah, we pass that two years ago.
We've been keeping them very tightly.
We delayed it with the bullying, so we could get public input, so we can, you're free to...
Yeah, I think after you read it, you then delay it until...
Yeah, but that makes sense, to, to have something official.
So we'll bring it back for first reading and then...
Yep, thank.
Ian.
Before we move on, I would just like you all to be thinking about a location that we might be able to specify as public expression. We may or may not do that, but be thinking.
Other than Little Harbor Rotary.
Yes.
All right, we want to try and move away from this, I think.
Okay.
I think.
Anything else? Great, all right. Next topic.
Yes, and just, I thought we covered one element of the budget in a quick workshop setting, so I think you have some materials in front of you, which are really a long way to explain where we are with guidance, clinical outreach, et cetera, so I think there's a sheet in front of you that says guidance services, you have the minimum standards there. I wanted to talk a little bit about that. It says that the school board shall ensure that every school provides a comprehensive guidance and counseling program. Pot B says the local school board, in carrying that plan out, will have loads, counseling loads, at each elementary school, that shall not exceed the equivalent of one full-time guidance counselor for 500 students served, and the counseling load in each middle school and each high school shall not exceed the equivalent of one full-time guidance counselor for 300. And then the rest of the text goes into great length to talk a little about the American School Counselors Association model for counseling. So by regulation, the state is saying they want to see you adopt and adhere to what's called the ASCA model. And quite frankly, we're a little bit behind in that work, and I think, you know, looking forward to next year, that's something that has to be assigned to the counseling troops, and it has to be a deliverable next year, and to how we do the scope and sequence of those three key standards in the ASCA model. So we talk about academic development, where students are learning to learn, we talk about a career development standard, where we work with our curriculum, where students are learning to earn, basically, and a personal social development piece. And so we need to really kind of get that accomplished with our counselors, and so you'll read later on in this, in the standard, on page two, is this notion that, last sentence, item four, is district-level directors of school guidance and counseling shall be provided in districts where the number of guidance counselors across all schools exceeds 10. And so we'll be recommending, as part of this budget, that we have an elevated director's position. It's traditionally been one of many duties put in the director of special services, but we really have to have a head to this organization who can lead the group. We have our professional learning community time in order to kind of tackle this. In fact, in conversations with Mr. Zadravich, you know, want to head this off this spring and maybe dedicate some work this summer to get moving on this. You know, as an example, I brought an example out where, you know, most states are required to have a guidance plan, and we just don't have it with a clearly delineated scope and sequence. So we need to do that work. And so I just shared with you, just so you weren't surprised, what is, what are the ASCA standards, so you can read a little bit about that. But more importantly, for budget reasons, what I want to share with you is the last page, and that is the adjustments we're recommending in student support services. So at each of our elementary schools, we have a full-time equivalent guidance counselor, we have a full-time equivalent outreach counselor, and we have an outreach paraprofessional. So you have three, you know, two professionals and a paraprofessional who assist at each one of our elementary schools. At the middle school, there are two full-time equivalent guidance counselors, and one full-time equivalent counselor who operates in the kids program. Now, I can't say with 100% certainty, but I suspect when kids programs were operated in the elementary schools years ago, this is when you saw an increase in counseling supports, when the programs were being, were being operated. At the high school, you have five full-time equivalent guidance, you have four at the grade levels, and then one college counselor. You have two full-time equivalents in the options program, which is a support service program for our special needs children. You have two full-time equivalent regular ed support counselors, and then one who operates under career and technical education. So there, right now, the high school enjoys 10 counselors, not all doing the work as we would traditionally think about a guidance counselor. And as I said the other night, I'm not, I'm not saying that the work that's been done by any of these folks is in any way not valued or not important, but when you're looking to make adjustments in the budget and you're looking at minimum standards, we're required to have one for every 500 children. And in fact, we need to have a curriculum, and, you know, the ASCA model to pretty much be delivered. So our recommendations going ahead to next year is to make adjustments at each of the elementary schools of the, to maintain the guidance counselor position, and the guidance, the remaining guidance position will have to take on some of that responsive services piece. And then at the high school, as I said, we've got one that's ARRA-funded, we're recommending an adjustment in options and an adjustment in that regular ed support. So we're not thinking about adjusting the, what we think of as the college counselor or the four positions for the grade levels. So we're, and then with the psychologist position, we're suggesting, going back to two years ago, at that level of service, and I think that's appropriate, from 3.0 to 2.5, staffing that at that level. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or any conversation you want to have.
Ken, Rebecca, Dexter.
And again, I like that we see structure and, you know, some understanding. I know we had a discussion, and I'm always, and you've been surprised, there have been hires that you didn't know because of, you know, department heads, or, I'm sorry, administrators were able, like special ed was able to hire pairs, and you don't know who they are, and I think we need to tighten that, and I kind of see this tightening coming with this. My concern is, is that, or not concern, my need to have some more help with this is that we've done this now two different nights, where we created or readjusted maintenance, we readjusted special ed and technology, is if there was one more line like on this tonight, because are we then totally eliminating that cost of an FTE? Like, I'll just use Little Harbor, you're taking out the outreach counselor there. If you take that out, I like to have the dollar amount there, but are we shifting any dollars to stifle somebody higher for taking over the job? Such as, under the special ed, if you're getting rid of the special ed director, and you're taking two individuals and giving them other duties?
Right.
Maintenance is having a new structure under, you know, we need to have the cost, the negative cost, because you're eliminating the custodian.
Right, yeah, fair enough. I understand you.
I need the pluses and the minuses.
Right. So these, for the record, these four positions come without any additional corresponding duties, so there are, you know, those are...
They're eliminating the service.
Right. Those are net reductions, but in the case of the special ed director, and we'll talk about this Thursday night, we are adjusting the current director's position, using the rationale of additional...
we are adjusting the current director's position, using the rationale of additional days, and at the daily per diem rate with the administrative contract, to achieve that synergy there. And similarly, you mentioned the maintenance piece, I want to be clear about that. We readjusted the job description, added additional duties, and we have increased his salary by, and I want to say, and it's somewhere in the order of about $5,000. We've adjusted it to the levels, and I know we had a conversation with the board earlier this year about that. So I can get you those numbers, and I'm happy to provide them.
And the maintenance one aside, now with these negatives that are going out, and the adjustments, and I'll use the two that you gave us at the high school. And this just hit me the other day with a discussion with an individual, and I really want to thank her. The individual just, you know, said, classroom, what we're always worried about is classroom ratio, teacher to that. But what we should be more concerned is student contact time. I mean, we have people that may not, and there are going to be oddities out there, of, you know, how do you, because, and I would say, it's all on the teacher's contract side that are more interested, and maybe on the administrative side to a degree, is that somebody might have only four or five students, but their contact hours might be very high with an individual, or individuals. And again, I don't know how we start to look at that, but, you know, it hit upon me that, you know, just because we have somebody in a classroom, or somebody has, how do we justify? It is, I hate to use it, you know, metaphorically, but it is a production-type line of what do you get for those amount of hours with the individuals? And again, we're always being bombarded, whether it's by city council, by the public, you know, why do we have such small classrooms? Well, classrooms do not equate to student contact hours. And again, I never quite put that together with all my years on it, but I think that's a very large component. I'm not sure how we get to measuring that, but it goes along with this, because now that you have a reduction here, under high school guidance, basically, of two FTEs, if that's kind of what I'm seeing for your recommendation here, what did we have beforehand for student contact hours under guidance? And now, what will the new people have? Will they pick that up, and who will pick that up as contact hours? Or there is no more contact hours, we lose those contact hours?
I hear you, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Rebecca, Dexter.
I just have a quick question, and then a request. For the elementary school guidance counselors, how come they're not based on population of students, or demographics of a certain school? How it's just that one school gets one counselor?
Well, I think that's just been a matter of past practice, but you see what the ratio is, it's 1 to 500. And I think it might be difficult to pass one position out between, let's say, New Franklin and Don Darrow on a 2/5, 3/5, because I think the needs, particularly if you're going to be eliminating the outreach position, I think you're going to need a full-time equivalent person here.
Okay. And then, my request is, would it be possible, to add to your list of things to do, to get budget items that are required, that are mandated, that we have no choice but to fund, such as the ASCA? I think that would be really helpful. I know it would help me, but I think it would be really helpful if everybody understood, we don't have a choice but to have guidance counselors. We don't have a choice but to have, you know, certain special ed programs that we have. Just get it out of the way, we can't cut from here. Because I think we all sort of, as we go along, pick, have different things that, you know, are our personal...
Yes.
Likes or dislikes. I know, I think that would be very helpful to sort of, you know, share what is we do.
And so, the other evening, you weren't here, unfortunately.
And I apologize.
But I did share with you the minimum school approval standards, which in large measure outlines exactly what we have to be delivering upon. And I'll get you a copy.
Okay.
And in fact, I had to do a couple slides last night for Budget 101, and I know we're trying to work on a way to present that in a simple fashion, so I will do that. And we're working on it, actually.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Dexter.
I should know this, but I don't. Could you briefly describe the major responsibilities of the outreach counselor? Well, I think they really work with your high at-risk population, you know, SES, student population. I don't think that, George could probably answer it, or Linda could better than I, so please chime in.
So, I'm just looking at Little Harbor. So the guidance counselor at Little Harbor, and I don't know how it works, the guidance counselor that Little Harbor handles, you know, the kids who, you know, their house might be in a state, things are not going quite well, they need some TLC, they need some nurturing, they have some problems, and it's, who knows? But there's, they're kids that you know, they sort of bubble up, and you know them, because they, you know, their families, you've had their brothers, sisters, you've probably had their parents. But, you know, you kind of have them. They just need help, they just need help. But I think the outreach counselors see an entirely different population of kids. The outreach counselors in our building see the kids who are, tend to have explosive behavior problems. The kids who don't just need another hug or something, they need, like, really, structure, handling. They can't handle problems, they tend to lash out at the grownups or the other kids, they just don't handle the situations. And they probably have, you know, they probably come from places that might, that might be the behavior that's modeled. And they're pretty aggressive. So it might be a smaller population, but they need sort of really intense, one-on-one kind of talking through things. They need a lot of practice about how to say something in a different way, how to get their point across without lashing out. So they really work with two different kind of populations of people.
So if we were to eliminate this position, and those students that need that extra handling would just go to the guidance counselor? Well, but you also have the paraprofessional, the outreach... Or the outreach paraprofessional, so either one would step in and provide that support.
Well, I think the counseling piece would be, the counseling piece for those kids in outreach would have to be picked up by the guidance counselor. Because there are two things. The outreach paraprofessional serves, she's sort of the consequence dolerouter.
Mm-hmm.
Like, if you've committed some kind of a, whatever, an offense of some sort, so she would be the person who would dole the consequence, whatever that would be. You know, five minutes on the wall, or you're going to come down, and we're going to chat. But she's not a counselor. She just sort of holds people's toes to the fire. So I would assume that that counseling piece would get picked up by the guidance counselor.
Anything, Principal Shea?
I would think, I think Linda's, I think I was going to come up.
Picture tight, okay.
I think Linda's depiction, at least in our building, is accurate. Sort of, the differential is kids in need of counseling, kids in crisis. And the outreach counselors work with kids in crisis. The paraprofessional can manage some of the situations, but they do not counsel, I would say. So that's an important thing to differentiate, that, you know, the guidance counselors do pick up some of those situations as well, but the outreach therapist is really a situational player, addressing situations, addressing crises, as well as the outreach component, so.
Good. Thank you, that was helpful.
Carol?
I guess my only comment would be, you know, these are standards, state standards, but does that mean they're right? Does that mean that they're good, that they're well researched, and what we should be striving for? Or should we be striving for something different than the state standards? And it goes along a little bit with what we just heard. You know, I mean, I like the idea, from a financial standpoint, of cutting an outreach counselor. I mean, you know, in terms of the budget, that sounds great. But we're not going to have any less kids in the system, we're going to have the same number of kids.
No.
And I said this at another meeting, I don't know if this is true or not, but I keep hearing that there aren't necessarily that many more kids with problems, but the kids who have problems, it's more severe. And when I hear this type of student who's lashing out violently, that's a pretty extreme situation. And I don't know if we have any data on who are our kids, what are their needs? And, you know, I just, I like it from a financial standpoint, but I worry about it in terms of, you know, where are these kids going to go? Who are they going to go to? Because we're not going to have any less of them.
Absolutely.
And with this economy, their family situations aren't going to get better. Chances are, in the next three, four, five years, kids' family situations will get worse. So, I appreciate what you're doing, and I respect it. I just, those would be my comments.
Right. So that would make me, Carol, that sort of makes me ask the question of, would we even be considering this if we didn't have external budget constraints right now?
Right.
You know? Because I do have concerns, Linda, also, about what you're saying. And who's going to be there to pick up the slack? It's probably going to end up being a combination of the guidance counselor, and then spread across some special ed...
The teacher.
Well, and the classroom teacher.
Yeah.
And what kind of impact does that kind of explosive outburst have on other students' ability to focus on what they need to do?
It's a huge impact.
Right.
I think. But I, you know, it's, I'm in a funny situation, because I sympathize with the fact that you have to look for places to cut. And I really appreciate, on the one hand, the fact that you're trying to really protect the core time, the core student contact time, but at the same time, this is sort of like a finite population of kids, and I'm fearful about who's going to help these kids. Because when these kids are in crisis, it can go, I'd like to tell you that every day that's not a crisis, but I was thinking today, that there were, so where my room is situated, there are a couple of kids on either side of me, who are in this sort of crisis plan. And they pretty much were in crisis all day today, and one of them was in crisis all day yesterday. And it, even though it's not in my room, it impacts us, because we hear, you know, depending on what's going on. So it is pretty impactful, you know? I don't know that there's any right or wrong answer to this, but I do think that there needs to be some kind of structure. You spend a lot of time describing jobs, making job descriptions, and maybe the guidance department is one of those places that you need to really look and see what is the vision for the guidance department in the city of Portsmouth? What is it that we're supposed to do? How are we supposed to handle what comes up? Because, you know, sometimes those women are dealing with, you know, all kinds of things at elementary. I can't speak to middle, high school, but, I mean, they're helping parents. You don't know what crisis is going to come to school. You don't know, most of these kids have a hard time handling anything. It's just really tricky. I don't know. I mean, I do have tremendous respect for what you're trying to do. I just don't know, I don't know what's going to happen to those little kids.
Right.
And that makes me nervous. I mean, am I right? I'm going to put you on the spot.
Say yes, George.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, George.
Okay, thank you, George.
Linda, you said it for...
So Rebecca, might I just have a couple more, before I go to you? So, I think part of this race is an interesting point of what Kent was saying before, which I hadn't thought about. And I, just in terms of the contact hour question, so when you have an explosive student during the day...
Yeah.
You might end up having a pretty long eight, you know, six to eight-hour one-to-one throughout that day, depending on a crisis, what the crisis is.
Well, it does, and depending on if I can handle it, if it's a situation that I can kind of diffuse...
In the classroom.
In the classroom, then we can do that. But if it's a situation that involves, depending on who you have to go to, if it's a guidance counselor, you have to get that sort of thing, if it's the outreach person, you have to get that plan, and sometimes you get the para from outreach involved, it depends. But that then takes away time to get that all figured out from the other kiddos.
It's fluid, it's happening...
It is.
While all this other stuff is going on.
While all this other stuff is going on, because it never happens by itself.
Right.
And it will probably happen on a snow day.
Right. And then, the other point was, to Carol's point about, you know, state standards, questioning good, bad, whatever. You know, on one hand, people hold up to us, as a school board, the state standards on class sizes, and they say, they're right, you should do this. And on the other hand, you're bringing up this point of, you know, so should we follow these state standards on, you know, on guidance counselors? So it's a really tough one. And to quote a very famous person I spoke with today, it sounds as if, you know, the pressures are actually making us sort of strip down our education to the state standards. And that's a consideration we need to think about, as we get to zero, as to whether we want to go to zero. Just a question. Rebecca.
I think we absolutely are having to strip down our education, and what Linda said, we don't know what's going on. And I think that we do so much more than educate, and I sort of think that that's sort of over here now, and we do all of this other stuff, and we do all of these other social interventions, and we don't know. And I think the public doesn't know, and it's not just in Portsmouth, but everywhere. And so, I'm wondering, like, if we were in the position to be adding to our budget, would bringing the resource officers back into the elementary school, would that help some of this? Because if this goes on and goes on, and phew, they're in sixth grade, they're in the middle school, they're out of our hair. Then they go on to the high school, you know, they're no longer there, and then they graduate, and then the Portsmouth PD gets them. And so, it's this snowball effect. And so, I think we need to look preventatively at these things, especially when it comes, because social is way different than it was. So I guess just two points, we sort of need to share that story, that yes, our main focus is to educate, but there are so many other parts of the puzzle that we don't do that And just how we sort of have to fit all of this together. It just, it is hard to get you...
So you're recommending we add something?
I, yes.
Anne, and then Dexter. I mean, Leslie, sorry.
I would like to think that we are above the state standards, actually. And in terms of beyond educating children, until you've taken care of the situation, you can't educate them, because there isn't anything that's going to happen, they're not going to let you.
Right.
You need to deal with the situation as it happens. And so, I have a concern about losing a counselor kind of thing, because I've seen the kinds of things that happen and don't happen. And so, in terms of state standards, whether we like them or not, I think there are certain things we must do, they're required. But there are other things that we want to do, that may not be required, that we should be doing above and beyond. Absolutely.
Leslie, sorry.
My concern is, will this result in more outside placements? And so, are we risking sort of one for the other?
Okay. So...
Just a concern.
So this will come back to us?
Absolutely.
This is the recommendation. So it's going from 25 FTEs to about 19.5, if I...
It's a reduction of four, one at the high school, and one at each of the elementaries, right?
Okay. Four.
Two at the high school.
It looks to be at the high school. Yeah, well, one is ARRA funding that's going to dissipate in any event. Oh, I see. And it was that additional position, really. The level should have been nine, but you...
So overall, it's a net reduction of four FTEs?
Okay.
Kent, sorry.
Actually, that was part of my question, is that, you know, part of this, and again, that's why I would like to get the numbers on the side, because it is, but, you know, February 11th is vastly approaching, and we're going to have these discussions. And we're not going to make a right or wrong decision, we're going to make a decision as we go along here. And it's going to be wrong in many eyes, and it's going to be right in some eyes, you know, when we start to do some of these cuts. And, you know, I think of, you know, and the only person, I think I might have read this book, because I know you're a good maner, probably you've read Boone Island, right? All right? Is that at some point, you have to make a decision. And if you know Boone Island, anybody else know the book, Boone Island? Okay? You decide that you gotta make that decision, in that case, you eat your friends. So, here...
Are we there yet?
We're now making some very difficult cuts.
Right.
And we are deciding...
Outreach help.
Huh?
Outreach help, we need it.
Outreach, I need outreach. But that, they needed it, huh? But the problem is, is that we don't have to make this decision. We can, we're an elected individual body, that if we say, this is too much of a risk factor, we built up to making sure our schools were safe in some manner. And this is the wrestle that we have, but February 11th is vastly approaching, and we need to decide, are we going to, you know, try our best to get to zero? And if we don't get to zero, okay, maybe we do. But I hate that zero being put out in front of us.
Right.
And when that zero is put out in front of us, it's like, well, we've got to reach it. No, there's no written law or policy that says the school board must make that zero. If we make it, great, but let's not do it at the safety and at the risk of students. Let's make sure that we don't have that extra stuff out there that people do talk about though. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Do you want to just...
Oh, yes, I, well, this needs narrative. And, and so I, I shared this this evening, we put this together a little while ago, and Mitch had asked me to, to do a narrative. And I thought I'd unveil pieces of it as we went along through the budget process. But I don't want to hold back with folks. This, I'll, I'll find pieces of this to actually incorporate into the budget booklet that we'll put together, once you've adopted a budget, and we try to get something out for March. But I did want to share it with all members of the board, so that you could see some of the additional work we went out and did, based on your workshop session. You know, for example, what do the five high schools look like? You know, four of the five run, a four-by-four, 90-minute block schedule? You know, how many AP courses do they offer, et cetera? Folks had asked about that. They asked for comparative salary data, et cetera. So we fleshed that out a little bit more. It, it speaks for itself right now, but we'll, we'll work to, to tell the story and interpret the, the data moving along.
So maybe as we move, before we move to the end of the budget process, we could dedicate, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes at some point, to have a conversation about this, if people have questions. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes, Anne.
When we saw the change in time possibility for the middle school, I, I have been contacted from a few people, from a few people who were involved with the school staff time committee. And, and people at the middle school are still very much interested in, in looking into changing that. And, and instead of having, you know, the quarter of eight time, which was discussed, maybe make it more like eight or 8:15 or something about, and possibly flipping with an elementary school. And I, I know that the principal is in favor of that kind of thing, and I just kind of wondered how people felt.
Meeting Mr. Stokel?
Right.
Yeah.
Wondering how, and that's hot up the press as of today, from a person that was on the committee with me. So I just kind of wondered how everyone else felt, if, if there are going to be changes, how many changes should we make? And if they're going to be... Now, when is the bus contract?
That's the policy.
Except it's time to renew it.
It's time, it's time to get it out now. I've been sort of stalling a little bit to try to see if there was any more data. I can't hold it much longer. I also got to get, I also got to get a little time free to budget exhibits to be able to flesh out...
Well, it was just a topic that came up, and I wondered how people felt about the possibility of, of the pilot. That was what it was initially going to be.
And the question is to...
Pilot with one school.
At the middle school, as opposed to at the high school?
Middle school, strictly middle school.
Where most research really says high school's better.
It is, except they're not as interested.
Right. Causes all kinds of problems. Carol, you have a question?
I read the data from that committee, and I went into it thinking that it makes the most sense to have a later start for young people in that age group. And I still think that. But I was surprised at how many conflicting opinions there were in, in that, and a lot of people had very strong feelings. People I didn't expect to, parents, and who had very strong feelings on this topic. So I still support it. I think it was really good work that the committee did. I agree. I think really the research is behind kids doing better if they go to school later in that age group.
And most of the parents, once, once you talked about the fact that what is best for the kids, what, it's not what's convenient for me.
Right.
Because many teachers at the, certainly the high school teachers were not interested in changing.
Right.
That was totally off the table.
Right. But I sense that some of the people who were opposing it, it was more for their personal reasons.
Exactly.
And not so much for the kids.
Much they thought about what's best for the kids.
So I, I think it's great. It, it's probably going to be controversial, though.
Mm-hmm.
I think, whatever happens. It's not, everybody's not going to love it.
That's why you ran for the school board, right?
Right.
So Ed is, Ed is passing out something he, he picked up, just, we can talk about this next, next time we meet. And he can talk about it if he wants to now. But it's basically the class size policy at Oyster River. Right? Leslie, you have a question?
I just had a question. Looking at the proposed work session schedule, when are we going to be talking about the English teachers from the middle school going to the high school?
I hadn't scheduled that. I didn't think that pained with a lot of controversy or...
Well, I've had a lot of people ask me about it, so I guess I, I was interested in having a conversation about it.
Let's put it, how about we talk about it Thursday night, then? I'll ask Mr. Stokel to come and speak to the schedule.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I would like...
Or if not, certainly the next Tuesday, the following Tuesday.
Okay.
Depending on his schedule.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to talk about if there are things folks need to have addressed.
I've heard a lot of bullying, questions about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our next meeting is Thursday, the 27th. We're at City Hall. We have a public, second public hearing that night, right? I think, is that right?
No.
No.
It's the eighth.
Oh, it's the eighth. Okay. Sorry. But we are meeting at City Hall on the 27th, Special Education Reorganization.
And we'll add the middle school.
And the middle school. Sorry. I'm jumping ahead. I've been known to do it. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.